Can I have a motion to have Treasurer Slavens act as clerk today?
I move we appoint Treasurer Slavens as the clerk for this meeting.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Treasurer Slavens, can you please do roll call?
Broninski. Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Slavens, good evening. And Snyderman?
Hello, I'm here.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the movement of public comment till after, you were saying after the hearing, Stephen?
Yeah, when the regular board meeting starts.
Until after the regular board meeting at 7:00 PM, so move that down.
Is that, sorry question, is that so that people could comment on the budget? But we're approving the budget before that?
We're approving.
Right after the hearing?
Oh, before the hearing, after the presentation, yeah. After the presentation.
Presentation, okay.
The public comment after the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
So moved.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Bills are paid. Okay.
Did you do the minutes?
Oh, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 7th, 14th, and 21st?
I move, support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Broninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, our first presentation is on priority-based budgeting. And I believe we have Eric Fabian and Director Trumble. You want to introduce him?
Sure thing. Eric Fabian from Resource X is joining us about, gosh, a year, a year ago, a year and a half ago or so. The township had agreed to utilize Resource X to help with our budgeting process for priority-based budgeting, which basically changes our budget process slightly. We still prepare our budget the same way. We presented our 24 budget to the board and 25 budget at the end of October. But after we present that budget, it basically takes our line item budget, which we have to prepare kind of in accordance with the state rules, the way we've done it. But it takes those line items and puts them in the different categories, which are programs, to try to identify when we take our budget, what are we actually doing with those dollars? What kind of programs are we actually providing to the citizens? So Eric Fabian is from Resource X, who, he's the owner of the company that was, that created this application that helps us to put all of our budget data into an application, which comes up with all these programs. He's on the line. He's going to walk us through, walk the board through the process we went through, kind of the results, how to interpret the results, and kind of what the next steps would be. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric. He's got a presentation that he would like to do for us. And after that, he would be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
All right.
Thank you. Hello, Eric. I think you're able to share if you need to. Any PowerPoint?
Yes, I believe so. Thank you so much. And good evening, Board of Trustees. Can everybody hear me all right, just to confirm before I get going?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. So with that in mind, I will share the screen and move forward with the presentation. One moment while I move into presenter view, so everyone can see the slides clearly. And while that's kicking in, again, my name's Eric Fabian with Resource X. Thank you again for having us tonight. For those who may not be familiar, Resource X has been in business for a little bit over a decade. And our mission is to support local governments with strategic alignment of resources to the outcomes that a township, or city, or county, or school district is seeking to achieve. And so tonight, we're going to talk about reframing the decision-making process through priority-based budgeting, talking about some general concepts and methodology around priority-based budgeting, and how Canton, Michigan has utilized the priority-based budgeting initiative for their decision-making purposes. And so when we think about budgeting, we've been somewhat on the front lines of, how can we rethink the way that we are approaching budgeting? And we're proud partners of both GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, and ICMA, International City County Management Association, as they also are in the thought leadership around rethinking budgeting. And the challenges facing today's leaders require something different from our budgeting process. That is the inspiration behind rethinking budgeting, and what we're in the business to try and solve. What, what is that something different that could make our budgeting process better? And so when we think about budgeting, we think about line item budgets. And kind of a fun fact, the line item budget celebrated its one-year anniversary, or 100-year anniversary, excuse me, this year. And so the line item budget is tried and true. It has a value, and it serves a purpose. But we also believe that it's constrained in some ways. And so when we think about a line item budget, and we think about the objects that we're focusing on from a line item perspective, like vehicle replacement, and professional services, and fuel, and maintenance supplies, we struggle to understand, are those investments making our community safer? Are these investments making our citizens healthier? And are these investments improving the economy? As just some examples. And this is where we believe we have an opportunity to utilize the line item budget, but build upon it so that we can gather and understand all of our budget and program data, all of the programs and services that we deliver, and utilize that for decision-making. And when we look at the difference between a line item and a program perspective, I want to take this example of postage budget from an organizational perspective of $1 million in this example. From a line item budget perspective, we're able to follow that postage budget to a variety of different departments. In this case, Water, Parks, and Finance. And from Water, we can see that they have half a million dollars of a million-dollar organizational postage budget, which is helpful and informative, but yet the story ends there. What does Water do with that half million dollars? How do they invest that half million dollars in postage budget? And from this example, and now from a program budgeting perspective, we're able to understand the story better. We can see that the Water Department mails bills to the tune of $400,000. And to those customers who don't respond in a timely manner, we see that the Water Department mails reminder notices to the tune of $20,000. And they also collect water samples and mail those in for water testing and quality testing to the tune of $10,000 in this example. And so now we have a better understanding of the programs and services that the Water Department deploys in spirit of the postage budget. And we can say, okay, we now mail bills. We know the cost of delivering those bills. And we also understand some additional data around, is that program mandated? And how is that program aligned with the outcomes that we're trying to achieve as a township? And we can start asking ourselves questions like, is this the most efficient way to deliver this program? Could we deploy a technology to this program? And in this case, paperless billing, for one example, and perhaps make that more impactful for residents, and increase the percentage of those who are paying bills in a timely manner, and also save $200,000? And perhaps reinvest or repurpose those funds into other programs that are demonstrating high alignment with the outcomes that the township is trying to achieve. So hopefully, that's starting to make sense of the value of the line item budget, but how there's more that we can gain from simply a line item perspective. And that's from a program perspective through priority-based budgeting. And so now, happy to take any questions, if any exist at the moment. But I could also move forward into priority-based budgeting process steps and illustrate the work the township has contributed towards their PBB, or Priority-Based Budgeting Initiative.
All right. No questions, thanks.
Thank you. So the source data that we always use to engage in a priority-based budgeting initiative always starts at your organization's, in this case, Canton's line item data. But we need to translate that line item data into programs. What are those activities, the programs and services that your organization delivers? And so we need to understand that inventory. We need to then allocate those line item costs from a personnel and non-personnel perspective to those programs. So we not only understand what do we do, but what is the cost of delivering those programs? And if there's a revenue associated with those programs, we want to understand that as well. And then we need to score or measure those programs. And we do that from two different perspectives, one of which is called basic program attributes. And those are things like, is the program mandated? And what is the cost recovery, if one exists, of that program? What's the demand of that program? Do we understand trends of demand is increasing, or staying flat, or decreasing? And we also want to understand what is the measurement or alignment of that program to the priorities of the township? From a safety perspective, what programs are really impacting community safety? From an infrastructure perspective, what programs are moving the needle towards infrastructure integrity? And then we want to be able to take action on that data. And so from a program inventory perspective, again, this answers the question, what do we do as an organization? From a line item perspective, we see personnel, and again, we see supplies and fuel. But we want to create a programmatic language at the activity and service level. So we actually perform snow plowing, and we do budget development, and host special events for the community, and payroll processing. These are programs and services, and this is a language that's more widely understood internally and externally to the community when we're starting to have discussions around those programs and services we deliver. Again, we want to allocate line items such as salt and sand, and motor, fuel, and uniforms, and maintenance operator, and street maintenance manager to the program. So we're now talking about snow plowing again. But we understand from a personnel and non-personnel perspective, the fully loaded cost of delivering snow plowing, in this example, a little bit over $4 million. We also want to understand, again, these both basic program attributes around population served, demand, and mandate. And we want to understand that program's alignment with things like infrastructure and safe and secure community in this example. And when we understand that, we can start to ask ourselves questions and take action on that data, and say, is this program delivering the impact on our priorities that we want to achieve? And if not, how might we deliver this program differently so it is more aligned? Or is the program perhaps not meeting the needs of the community any longer? And we may consider alternative ways of delivering the program, or perhaps scaling back that program, given there's not a large community or resident demand for it, and repurposing those resources into other higher impactful programs. And so again, the line item budget serves a purpose. It's not going away. But how can we leverage that and build upon it with different program data, and program cost data, and program scoring and measurement data, so we can understand resource investment and optimize our resource alignment? And at the end of the day, programs are a vehicle for analyzing and communicating change, and a platform for insight and action. So now that we've, I'm sorry, is there a question or a comment?
No.
Okay, I'm hearing a little bit of background noise. My apologies. So now that we've covered some of these concepts of priority-based budgeting, let's get down to how priority-based budgeting is implemented and applied in Canton itself. So Canton started engaging in priority-based budgeting in early 2022. You've developed a robust program inventory from both a community and governance perspective. And that is 343 programs identified across 24 different funds in the township. And those are programs that both serve internal governance activities, such as HR services and IT, and also those programs that are more community-focused, like police, and fire, and public works. The township has allocated all of their line items from a personnel, non-personnel, and revenue perspective to programs. So the township now understands, what do we do, and what does it cost to deliver that program? And the township has scored those programs against those basic program attributes, such as mandate, and Canton's strategic plan initiatives. And finally, performed a peer review on that scoring to ensure that scoring agreement and data integrity. And so you now have a fully completed program-level dataset built upon your line item budget. And that provides an opportunity to analyze those programs internally, create program insights and recommendations, and ultimately carry forward those insights and recommendations into a future budget cycle, and incorporate into budget proposals for review. And then, super excited that you've also been one of the handful of priority-based budgeting communities who are launching a resident dashboard to really engage and share this programmatic dataset that you've created. And we'll demonstrate that resident dashboard here in a little bit. So what's the value and benefit of this work? Significant work that you've invested in priority-based budgeting? Again, we've created this common language around programs that not only internally, from staff and leadership, that you can all understand, elected officials, of course, but also a common language that residents understand better. Residents understand snow plowing. They struggle a little bit more to understand what fuel investment, uniforms, and professional training from a line item perspective really mean. You have the cost of each program, cost recovery for programs that have revenue. And we have a full perspective of those programs that are most aligned with Canton's key strategies and initiatives, and those that aren't as highly aligned. And also, from a resource or dollar investment, how much is the city contributing and investing towards those key strategies and initiatives? And which programs are really moving the needle on those township priorities? And we also have opportunities, as I mentioned, to then analyze that data and create recommendations on how to even better align those programs and services you deliver to the outcomes this township wants to achieve, and what residents expect. And so this slide just communicates and demonstrates that within the software platform, we're measuring tools, or I'm sorry, measuring the outcomes that Canton is striving to achieve through your strategic plan, and those are embedded within the software system itself, so we can understand programmatic impact, and also dollar investment towards those key strategic priorities. We also have perspective on comparative costs of programs, and can filter and analyze all of the different programs from a personnel and non-personnel cost perspective, revenue perspective, and subdivide those by divisions and funds, if necessary. Here's another perspective of program analysis from an expense and revenue perspective, understanding which programs may be subsidized, and to what extent. And if that is perhaps a surprise to some, have a conversation around whether that's intentional, or perhaps, perhaps not, and have additional conversations around revenue studies. And again, ultimately, understanding where resources are being investment, or invested from a perspective of those key strategic priorities the township seeks to achieve, which specific programs are moving the needle. In this case, in, you know, welcoming community, and how those programs are aligned, or not as aligned as you wish. And the good news is, one of the city wins, is that from a priority-based budgeting, resource investment perspective, the vast majority of city dollars are going towards those programs that are most aligned to the outcomes you're trying to achieve. So from this slide, you see those most aligned bar chart at $64 million. More aligned, which is also very positive, has the second highest. So this is what you want to see. This is one data perspective that reflects that the most of the township's resources are being invested towards dollars that are impacting and moving the needle on those outcomes you're trying to achieve. So from this perspective, this is a win, and obviously, more detail to come here. Another quick data point is to look at the top eight most aligned specific programs ranked by cost that are most highly aligned towards the outcomes that you're trying to achieve. Here we see water delivery system operations, emergency medical, sanitary sewer, and so on. So from a cost perspective, and investment perspective, these are the programs that are achieving the highest ROI, if you will. And then from an opportunity perspective, these programs are least aligned. And that doesn't mean that these programs are bad, or that this is a poor investment from the township towards programs and services. This simply means that these programs deserve further study and further evaluation. And there could very well be a solid reason that these programs should be, continued to be provided as is, and are serving the township residents and community in a very effective way. But the data suggests that there should be just further conversation, at least, to ensure that that's the case. And perhaps there is a way to deliver one or more of these programs differently, or in an alternative way, that would make these programs more impactful. Almost done with the presentation, and then we can get to the resident dashboard. So carrying on from that kind of least-aligned program perspective, and what opportunities does priority-based data, priority-based budgeting data provide us? It really is about analyzing the data and creating insights or recommendations on programs that you believe could have greater impact on those overall township priorities. And we do that through a process called program insights. And it really is a way to work with Canton's staff and leadership, who really are the program experts, and challenge them from a cross-departmental perspective to brainstorm and ideate on ways that programs might be delivered differently so that they're more highly aligned with those outcomes that you're trying to achieve. And to that end, we created a priority-based budgeting blueprint that provides guidelines on how you can run each individual program, or a subset of programs, through these opportunity areas, and start asking yourselves, from a sourcing perspective, are there opportunities within this given program? Are there program efficiencies? Can we apply a technology to improve program efficiencies? Do we need to evaluate the program's service level? Do we need to increase the service level and invest more monies because the program's demonstrating impact across all, or the vast majority of priorities the township is trying to achieve? Or perhaps the program is lesser aligned, and is not in demand from a resident and community perspective? And we wish to reduce that service level, reduce the cost, and repurpose those funds to other programs. And from a fees and charges perspective, are there opportunities to look at revenue, revenue opportunities, to the extent it makes sense? And increase those fees and charges, again, on a case-by-case basis? We can look at grant funding opportunities, and then you see at the very bottom, taxes and rates. We consider that the last option. It's sometimes necessary, oftentimes unpopular. And so we try and look at every different angle prior to getting to that option. And so some of the future opportunities that the township has is to, you know, continue to analyze this data. And we have data visualization tools to make this analytical process easier and more efficient. And to then... this, um, analytical process easier and more efficient, um, and to then build upon our analysis and actually create program insights or, or recommendations, um, that could be, um, utilized in a, a future budget cycle. Um, and also look for perhaps opportunities, um, not only internally from the township itself, but, um, opportunities outside of the township, uh, perhaps within, um, the county that, that Canton resides in, or, uh, neighboring cities and, and townships or jurisdictions, or school districts, or other public entities. Um, those are, those are opportunities down the line that could be considered. Um, and then you're, you're already doing a good job on, uh, kind of publicly communicating this, um, investment in time and resources, um, into priority-based budgeting and, and sharing what, um, what you've developed, um, sharing that programmatic language and, um, sharing some of the insights and recommendations you gleaned, um, from, uh, your work. Um, and, uh, one of those options includes, um, that, um, resident dashboard, or what we might consider open priority-based budgeting data, um, for residents to interact and engage, um, with the good work that you've done. And, um, you know, we've worked with over three hundred organizations across North America, uh, but only about two dozen or so have actually created a resident dashboard. Um, and it's not because it's necessarily, um, you know, risky, um, but it's because it, it's bold, it's, it's hard for organizations to feel confident to share their information. Um, but you are in good company with organizations like one of your Michigan neighbors, Vado Creek, uh, Flagstaff, Arizona, Longmont, Colorado, just to name a few. Um, but it is a best practice from a transparency perspective, um, and so we're, we're really excited and applaud, uh, that Canton is, um, willing and feels confident in the integrity of their priority-based budgeting data and wants to engage residents in the community, um, in that data platform. Um, and so, we are going to, um, dive into that, and to do so, I need to, to exit this share screen platform and, and open up that, um, resident dashboard window, uh, and while my screen's transitioning, certainly open to, to any questions or initial feedback or thoughts, uh, that this group may have.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you, Chris. Um, interesting presentation. I think I came into it thinking I knew what priority-based budgeting was, but there's a lot more to it than I thought, than I actually knew there was. Um, I think this might be more for you, Director Trumbull, but is, as an outcome of this, do you foresee that, um, presentations and even RBAs will have PBB information, uh, for us to have to make decisions on, um, when any director or organization brings forward proposals for the board to look at or evaluate?
Uh, you know, I, I guess I haven't thought that far ahead. As far as budget presentations go, the, what I would foresee happening is it almost being presented in two different ways, so that we are still required to adopt the budget based on the state requirements, the way that we have presented, historically presented the budget, um, to the board. However, um, to Eric's point, it doesn't really tell the story necessarily of all the programs that we do, so you can't look at our budget and necessarily know how much money we're spending on, you know, the water services or, or the police and fire. So I would almost see it kind of coming in tandem. So, um, after the, um, presentation's done, we have the pro, all the program inventory with the, all of the programs costed out in the different quartiles, if you will, of, of where it falls, if it's meeting the, the goals of the community in quartile one, two, three, or four, um, for the board to look at. And kind of where I more so envision it doing is to tell the story as to what our programs are doing, and then, you know, should there come a point in time, we have to start making some, um, different decisions, or the board's thinking about, well, we'd like to offer this service, is there other services that we might be able to cut back on because it's not really the board's priority that'll help give the board some direction overlooking at certain things that if we had to make some cuts somewhere, where would the board like to kind of focus on those, or, you know, make some changes to the budget? Um, as far as moving forward for the, for the RBAs, um, and how would things align? Um, we probably could think of a way to incorporate, you know, what quartile these things are falling in as far as where they are and as far as the board goals go, um, I guess we hadn't really thought that.
Yeah, we already do that with board goals in the RBAs, right? They're, it says.
They do. And, and one of the things that's important to think about, um, and Eric alluded to this a little bit, when we went through the program scoring, that was really taking the current board goals and scoring the programs against the board goals. So there could be something that scored relatively low because a board goal didn't specifically identify a program, but the board might look at this and say, well, this certainly, for example, um, you put, it was hard to see on the screen, the, the ones that ranked in the fourth quartile, but it was, um, there were things such as, um, computer security, like the, taking care of our current computer applications. I think the board would certainly look at that and say, well, we're very concerned, that's, that's definitely a priority of ours to look at that, but just because the board goals didn't necessarily specifically call that out, it scored kind of low. Um, but every department scored their own programs against the board goals, and then they were reviewed by other departments within the township and said, do we agree with these scores, or do we not agree with these scores? So, so everybody, um, within the departments and a peer regu, peer review group outside of the department, outside of their own individuals, also scored them against the board goals. And so internally, everybody's aligned with where they currently line up with the board goals, with the demand and whatnot. So, I guess that's kind of a long-winded answer, that if the board goals change in two years or a year, all of those scores could also change in where they line up in the quartiles as well. But, um, yeah, we can certainly, and, you know, I can work with Joe, and we can try to figure out a way to incorporate future budget requests and needs, and how we can align that with, with, um, the priority-based budgeting. We just don't necessarily have that outline quite yet, but we, but we can come up with something for sure.
Yeah, we're just at the beginning, I understand, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, so a couple of questions for you, Wendy. When we say most aligned, is like, are you, how is this calculating? Is, is it a number? It's basing on a number? Like, you know, you have most, least, like, how, how are, how are you, how is the program doing that?
So, so I can let Eric speak to that a little bit more, but, but each of the programs, so there's, um, he had referenced the basic program attributes, so those are things such as demand, is the demand increasing, staying the same, or decreasing? Uh, is it a federal mandate? Is it a state mandate, local, or is there no mandate? Um, population served, is it serving a bunch of the population? Is it serving, you know, a hundred residents out of our hundred thousand? You know, so, so basically, um, it's almost like a algebraic equation behind the scenes where if it's, um, increasing demand, um, so like behind the scenes, if it's like a weighted, a one is, one is if the demand is decreasing, three is if it's stable, and five is increasing, it's almost saying, all right, it's a five times three because it's increasing and it's weighted the highest, so it's, it's like an algebraic equation almost, taking that from the basic program attributes. And it's doing the same thing with the board goals. So it's basically saying, how strongly is, are these items meeting the board goals? And then adding those up, if, if that helps, it's kind of behind the scenes. Eric, did I, did I speak to that correctly?
Yeah, you did great, you did great. I think, you know, perhaps even a slightly simpler way to, to communicate it is those programs that are ranked as, um, most aligned are effectively achieving the most ROI or routine, um, return on investment from a resource investment perspective. The reason why is they're demonstrating the most alignment overall with those priorities the township is seeking to achieve, welcoming community, healthy ecosystem, et cetera, et cetera. Now, it might not be achieving the highest scores across every single one of them, uh, but they're achieving higher scores in relation to other programs. Um, and so it's a good overall perspective and measurements of a program's impact across organizational goals, uh, but it's still worthwhile in drilling down into that program to see how it scores or measures against each individual outcome that the township is, uh, seeking to achieve.
Okay. Um, yeah, my other questions were same as Stephen's, that, you know, well, how are we going to use this in the future? And as I under, as you just mentioned, it's in the, just in the beginning stages, right? So, okay. All right, thank you.
Correct. I would, I would envision in future budget presentations before we meet, um, you know, we always send out the reports, the individual line item reports, I would envision that this report that you'll see after this will also be provided in tandem with those reports moving forward before the budget presentation's moving forward.
Thank you.
So, um, not a question, just a comment, I, I, um, thought the presentation was really informative and, um, just, I think it's what we envisioned as a board when we decided that we wanted to go towards, uh, priority-based budgeting. So thank you for, for the presentation, um, and I'm looking forward to seeing the, the resident dashboard, it looks exciting.
Thanks, I guess one other question, so it's kind of based on what you're already saying, Wendy and Eric. If you have things like fixing computers or application software, or even, you know, janitorial services, those are required, so should another category always be added just called maybe required operations or something like that, where it might not necessarily be a goal, but it's required to operate the township?
I would, I would look to Eric for some, for some guidance on how to do that. We scored these programs based on, you know, their model that has been created, and to give the board a full scope. I mean, if you really look at this, some of the janitorial services, my, my gut would be, because that was one of them that ranked low, um, is because it can be outsourced. You know, that, that's one of the things, is it have to be done in, inside, could, could it be done, uh, outside? And the fact that the board goals didn't specifically address, you know, maintaining the facilities, you couldn't, there was nothing to rate it against as easily, so, so that was part of it as well. So I, so I think this is really a guide, it's not to say let's create a, something so everything's in alignment, but I think it's really meant to be a guide, so you guys can identify as a board what things you want to focus on, what things maybe, you know, we could look at and provide services differently, or, yeah, ranked low just because our goals didn't specifically identify, but this is certainly an important, um, program for us, and we're not looking to, to change that. So, so I think it's really just used to be a tool and not to be, uh, the Bible, I guess.
Yeah. I couldn't have said it better, it's meant to be a tool, not a Bible. Um, and, um, while there's a, a lot of work that Canton staff put into developing this, uh, priority-based budgeting dataset, and it has a lot of value, the overall methodology that I hope, um, you know, Canton and other cities we work with adopt is, let, let's, let's be willing to challenge the status quo a little bit. We don't need to completely poke the bear, but let's keep an open mind and, and ask ourselves, um, from a janitorial perspective, um, and I know that there's considerations around, um, possible, uh, union positions, um, and a lot of sensitivities around a lot of these conversations, but can we understand what the data's telling us and at least have conversations around, is janitorial services, for example, mandated? It's probably not mandated, is it appreciated by everyone? Certainly. Um, what, what does it actually cost to provide it? Has anyone really looked at that? And, um, based upon, you know, that cost and other data, um, can we have a conversation around, is the way we're delivering that service currently the best way to deliver it moving forward? And the answer might be yes, um, there's no other option, and if that's the case, that's great, but at least you had the conversation. And a different conversation around a different program may lead to a recommendation on changing how that program is delivered moving forward, and if that's the case, then, um, I think all of us would be successful, um, and, and Canton would have, um, initiated, um, a, a positive action based on this data, um, that it might save the, uh, township money, or might, um, deliver a program differently, so it's more impactful ultimately for, uh, the community or, um, township staff.
I have a question for Eric, if we could, before we hop off. So as we kind of prepare to, uh, prepare staff for resident questions, I just wanted to ask if, if he has seen anything in other communities that, uh, that they may be using to help prepare staff to answer those questions as they come up, uh, kind of to what he was just alluding to, but are there any other kind of best case or best practices that are being used by other communities that have the dashboard and have, have this information out? Because we know a lot of our frontline staff are going to get approached by residents asking questions about certain services, you know, why, why they cost what they do, or, you know, how much the township spends on certain services, so just wanted to see if there might be something out there with that.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, you know, I would, I would suggest, and as a best practice, have staff familiar around not just the details of, um, certain specific programs and their costs and how they're scored, but what's the overall purpose and goal from a, a priority-based budgeting, um, approach? And it really is, you know, how can we, um, really strategically align resources to achieve community outcomes? And that's the purpose of this data. Now, getting, getting more specific, there's, um, more content even on your resident da- dashboard that kind of provides some background context, um, around what is priority-based budgeting and, and how is it used that, um, I would encourage frontline staff to become familiar with, um, and not only on the resident dashboard itself, um, but perhaps, um, other communities have created dedicated priority-based budgeting webpages, um, as a, as a sub-page in their finance or budgeting, um, municipal webpage to do that external communication, provide some, um, context around, uh, the core concepts of priority-based budgeting and, and what the township hopes to achieve through this initiative. Uh, so really, really education and familiarity, um, around priority-based budgeting itself.
And, and I would further that Eric has provided an example of, um, another community who has that kind of front page of their website before jumping into the dashboard, that, um, we're planning to get up, you know, before being able to enter priority-based budgeting, just to give people and residents more of a background of what this, what the purpose of this is and what the information's going to provide, and we're going to work with our communications staff to make sure it's something that makes sense to non-accountants who, who might be coming to look at the information as well. So, uh, we are working on that. Before we post this, we will be working with Kristen to do that.
Great, thank you. So are we going, he's, are we going to, okay?
Yeah, Eric, if you want to go into the dashboard, just to kind of walk through it, so the board, uh, and any residents who might be watching this knows how to go through the data a little bit, that would be great.
Yeah, certainly, thank you. Um, so I think this is the, the homepage, uh, when you initially, uh, bring up the, um, the dashboard URL, um, and this is specific to Canton, Michigan. Um, the information button, I highly recommend, um, first-time users to read through, uh, it provides multiple small windows, um, of guidance and information and context of what a viewer is, uh, looking at and attempting to understand. Um, and so I, I certainly recommend, uh, that information button as a starting point. Um, but ultimately, uh, this dashboard somewhat mirrors the, the inter- somewhat mirrors the, the internal priority based budgeting software tools in a easier digestible format. So you can see the initial um tabs here represent strategic initiatives of the township. And the subsets um are um kind of definitions of each of these tabs. So one of the definitions of welcoming community unique to Canton is provide program strategies and activities to increase our ability to deliver excellent services to our diverse community. If you were to tab healthy ecosystem, you will see that these definitions of healthy ecosystem uh change to align with this um priority. Um, so that's, that's important to understand. Um, and when we um, look at some of these different tab sets, um, again, these windows are um township priorities. We can also pivot to uh program attributes. And again, those are um kind of eh data um associated with each unique program around mandate and level of mandate, uh reliance and cost recovery, uh demand, et cetera. Um, we also have uh the budget uh tab. So uh, we want to make sure that this represents the most current adopted budget, which it does. Um, and then we have a service area dropdown menu, um, which in the default mode is all available. Uh, but we can also drill down into specific uh departments um if we wish to do so. And so there's also the, the summary tabs um where our bars um that always have a hover over opportunity. So you can start to understand from a mandate perspective. Uh, the township um has fifty-five million dollars into programs that are mandated at a state or federal level. Um, and then has thirty million dollars of a mandate that at, that is at the um kind of board or township level. Um, and thirty-two million dollars in programs that have no mandate. Um, so there's oftentimes a relationship between either uh between these windows up here. Um, in this case mandate reliance, cost recovery. Um, or from a township priority perspective, uh, when we're looking at welcoming community, healthy ecosystem, we're also looking at um, the township is investing forty-two million dollars in programs and services that are demonstrating extreme or the highest level of alignment towards all of these priorities that the township hopes to achieve. And so the summary is all bar charts and there's also some different options such as tree plot where you can get more granular. Um, and again, we always want to make sure we understand what perspective we're looking at. This tree plot perspective is equated to welcoming community. If we tab over to healthy ecosystem, uh ecosystem, we're going to get a different perspective. Um, but moving back to welcoming community, the larger um, the program box, each box represents a program and you can see in this case patrol operations. The, the larger uh box and the um deeper the color, the, the greater the overall alignment with that program to this specific outcome. And if we hover over the program, again, we can see a variety of different additional data revolving around the department, the program, patrol operations, alignment, um, the total cost, FTE to deliver that program. A breakdown of the cost between personnel and non-personnel. Um, and also any revenue associated with that program. And so it's, it's a, it's a data-rich um resident dashboard and take some um kind of playing around with it, for lack of a better word, some practice, if you will. Um, but I think um residents will really gain appreciation for the uh transparency and the information at a program level that they perhaps have never been able to experience before. Um, and so this could certainly be uh a resident and community asset as they engage in, in, in conversations with staff and leadership and elected officials moving forward.
Question?
Any, any thoughts or questions or, or feedback on just that, that brief overview of, of the dashboard?
What kind of feedback have you gotten from Battle Creek? Do you know?
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
What kind of feedback have you received from Battle Creek after they implemented this um dashboard?
Yeah, Battle Creek has had the uh resident dashboard up for several years. They've been um partners of, of Resource X and engaging in priority based budgeting for nearly eight years. Um, and it's, it's starting to enter the, the community vocabulary. Um, talking at a, a program level and in a, a program basis, they're uh city manager Rebecca Flurry uh frequently references priority based budgeting in community meetings. Frequently references and talks at the, at the program level. Um, and um, from what we understand and what we've been told by uh folks like city manager Flurry that it's, it's making an impact in how they engage the community. Now, are, are those residents that were already vocal? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Or maybe I had an echo there.
No, not us. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, uh, the resident dashboard does have a feedback component to it as well. Um, and so this is uh an opportunity to elicit, um, you know, Canton resident feedback as well. Um, both through the dashboard and uh likely through future public meetings and uh could be an opportunity to introduce this, um, you know, not only on your website or through um, you know, social media or however you may wish to uh distribute this opportunity, but uh could be an opportunity to um demo this in, in future public meetings as well.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Diane?
Just make a quick comment. Thank you so much. Great presentation, Eric. Um, I know, you know, I appreciate all the staff that stepped up to help with. This was a heavy lift. And I know especially Carolyn and Caitlin, you guys really put in the hours. We truly appreciate it. Um, this is a great program and I know it was a lot of work. You were doing your own work along with this. So we really appreciate um all the hard work you guys did. So thank you very much. Appreciate.
Thank you, Board, for having me tonight. Uh, thank you Carolyn and Wendy and Caitlin for being uh great partners and township advocates in your um leadership of, of priority based budgeting here um along with the board. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I think the deputy supervisor brought the um team that input all the data, some pizzas last time. I think another PBB party is coming up too. Okay, go ahead.
Just, just one question. When is the resident dashboard going to be ready for residents to use?
Excuse me, can you hear me? We have the link. Uh, so it's ready to go. It's really a matter of making sure we get the cover page uh prepared. So I, I would say we could have that up by the end of the year, by the end of December for sure, just as long as we have the communication. We, we want to make sure we put all the uh explanation up first without just providing a link. So I'll work with the communications team and, and Joe and we'll get that up in the next few weeks.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Eric. Thanks Wendy. Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too. Okay, it's uh seven o'clock, which is, we'll start our regular board meeting. Um, let me see, I will move to before the public hearing, we agreed to, I believe, we will do the public comments. So public comments on agenda items only, three minutes for public comments on agenda items only. Uh, please go up to the podium. Let me check on our attendees. Are there any online public comments on agenda items? I'm looking online. If you are online and you want to make some public comments, please raise your hand. Okay, see, I do not see any hands raised for public comments on agenda items only. All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience? Public comments on agenda items only? Would you like to come up and make some public comments on agenda items only? Okay, so we do have public comment at the end of the meeting also. All right, all right, thank you. Can I have a motion to start the public hearing and adoption of? Oh, I think we, we did that. Yeah, that's okay. Could I have a public hearing on adoption? I'm sorry. A motion to start the public hearing on adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget?
Madam Supervisor, at uh seven oh one, I make a motion that we open for, open um for public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, public hearing is open. Uh Wendy, would you like to make any comments?
Ooh, I'm all discombobulated. Um, the budget that we are asking the board to um, or actually presenting for the public hearing for starters is the same budget that we presented to the board on October twenty-ninth, no changes to it. Uh, and we also had presented it back in April as well thoroughly. So um, no comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone in line? Would you like to comment on fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget? Do you have any questions or comments online? You can raise your hand electronically and I will call on you. Any questions on the public budget for twenty twenty-four? Nothing? Okay, anyone in the room want to comment on the twenty twenty-four budget? Any questions or comments on the twenty twenty-four budget in the room? Okay, seeing none. Let me see. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Supervisor, it is seven oh three and I motion that we close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Snideman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I have a resolution. Uh, Board of Trustees, Charter Township of Michigan. Um, public hearing and adoption of fiscal year twenty four, twenty twenty-four budget. Whereas Act three fifty-nine of nineteen forty-seven, the Charter Township Act requires that the annual budget be adopted by resolution. Whereas pursuant to MCLA one forty-one point four twelve and point four thirteen, notice of public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-four budget was published in a newspaper of general circulation on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And a public hearing on proposed budget was held on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore be it resolved that estimated total revenues and expenditures for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year are hereby appropriated on fund level basis. Totals by fund as follows in our packet. Further resolved, the township oh, further resolved, the township supervisor has the authority to approve budget adjustment between departments based on the recommendation by the appropriate department director and finance and budget director in accordance with the adopted policies. Additionally, the use of contingency funds must be approved by both finance and budget director and supervisor. Further resolved that the Charter Township of Canton Board adopts the twenty twenty-four budget for the various funds on fund level. Township officials responsible for the expenditures authorized in the budget may expend township funds up to but not to exceed the total appropriate authorized for each fund. Further resolved that the millage levy previously approved by the board on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three will be utilized to support the twenty twenty-four budget. Further resolved that the, there shall not be any new positions created that shall result in an increase in employee headcount with department or division without prior township board approval. And further resolved that the township supervisor has the authority to fill existing vacant and budgeted positions and reclassified positions based on the recommendation by the appropriate department director and the finance and budget director. And further resolved that claims against the township shall be approved by the Charter Township of Canton Board prior to being paid. The township clerk and the township treasurer may authorize payment of certain claims prior to approval by the board to avoid late penalties, service charges and interest, for example, utilities and payroll in accordance with approved salaries and hourly rates adopted by the township board. And the township board shall receive a list of those claims paid prior to approval for approval of the next board meeting.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow for public comments regarding the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. The initial budget was presented to the township board during a study session held on April fourth, twenty twenty-three, and changes were discussed at the study session on November first, twenty twenty-three. Tonight, the finance department is requesting the township board of trustees adopt the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. Any questions or comments? By anyone? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we um approve um C one, consider approval of twenty twenty-four Building Board of Appeals meeting dates. C two, consider twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting schedule. C three, consider approval of agreement with Wayne County to provide winter maintenance on nine point two eight miles, which is eighteen point two one lane miles of county roads. Uh, C four, consider twenty twenty-four Zoning Board of Appeals meeting schedule. C five, consider award amendment to the twenty twenty-three CDBG program year and annual action plan. C six, consider approving an increase to the blanket purchase order issued to Accumed Billing Inc. C seven, consider approval of intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the Western Wayne County Therapeutic Recreation. C eight, consider increase of purchase order for AKT Peerless Environmental Services to perform an environmental assessment at the Village Arts Factory, five zero seven five five Cherry Hill.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G one, we'll move on to the general calendar. Consider site plan for automobile service station Discount Tire.
Another one. Uh, resolution of the Board of Trustees. Approval of the site plan for Discount Tire. Whereas the project sponsor has requested site plan approval for automobile service station establishment used on parcel listed in our packet at five zero zero eight Research Drive. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as request, as request meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the site plan in planning application number one three one dash SPC dash seven nine one nine for an automobile service station establishment use on tax parcel listed in our packet at five zero zero eight Research Drive. As a request meets the requirements of the Canton Township zoning ordinance, subject to all federal, state, county and township requirements, including required corrections to the monument sign planned pursuant to Article six A of the zoning ordinance.
Support. Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The applicant proposes to construct an automobile service station establishment Discount Tire at 5008 Research Drive, which is vacant. Parcel is listed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue, Research Drive, between Beck Road and Belva Road, and is located in the Quadrants Industrial Research Park. The subject site is zoned. Light industrial and automobile service station establishments are special land uses in the light industrial zoning district, subject to 6.02(c) of the zoning ordinance. At its meeting on May 23rd, 2023, the township board of trustees approved the special land use application. At its meeting on November 6th, 2023, the planning commission recommended approval of a site plan with conditions. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything else to add, but community planner Patrick Sloan is also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Patrick. Trustee Foster, do you want to add anything from the meeting?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Steven?
Patrick, I do have a question. In the minutes from the planning commission, Commissioner Cruz mentioned something about a water line and moving it, and I was wondering if you could explain that and if it was decided that that should occur.
Of the water line? Yeah, that'll be something that will be evaluated during the engineering review. When if the site plan is approved, then the applicants proceed to engineering review and building plan review. And at that point, the plans get more three-dimensional, where there's more utility layout underground as well as anything above ground. So, that'll be something that our engineering division will hash out during their review.
Yeah, it seemed weird to me, but I didn't understand, like, how he had even thought to think of that. I tried to find it in the documents, and so...
Well, Commissioner Cruz is a civil engineer.
Yeah, that's true, yep. There... Well, it's not a very big lot, but there are some trees on it. Will there be consideration for the trees?
There are. During the special land use review, the trees on the west side were proposed to be preserved. And during site plan review, those trees are proposed to be removed. And the reason is, the applicants are making what's called a compensatory cut to increase the size and volume of the floodplain area because there's some plug plain filling proposed. They still have to go through FEMA and Eagle for those permits. But to do the compensatory cut, it did result in some proposed tree removal. To mitigate that, the applicants are proposing to replan trees in accordance with our tree preservation article.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider special land use in site plan for fast-food drive-through restaurant Raising Cane's.
Madam Supervisor, approval of special land use site plan for Raising Cane's. Whereas a project sponsor has requested special land use approval and site plan approval for fast-food drive-through restaurant use on the parcel listed in our packet at 44250 Ford Road. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the special land use application and applicable criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as a request meets the criteria of the special land use approval in Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the site plan application and applicable criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as a request meets the requirement of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the special land use and site plan in planning application and 040-SPC-7842, respectively, for a fast-food drive-through restaurant use on parcel listed in our packet at 44250 Ford Road as the request meets the special land use criteria and development standards of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided subject to all state, county, township requirements, including fire department approval with the drive aisle width.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The project sponsor proposes to construct a 3,700-square-foot Raising Cane's fast-food drive-through restaurant at 44250 Ford Road, which is located on the north side of Ford Road between Sheldon and Morton Taylor. TGI Fridays is currently located on the site, and the applicant proposes to demolish the old TGI Fridays restaurant and construct a Raising Cane's restaurant. Fast-food drive-through restaurants are special land uses in the C2 district. The applicant has concurrently applied for a special land use review and site plan review. At its meeting on November 6th, 2023, the planning commission recommended approval of the special land use and site plan with conditions. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I do not have anything to add, but the community planner Patrick Sloan is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Foster, do you want to add anything?
Nothing to add. We had an interesting conversation, the planning commission, about this and the drive-through and how it was set up at other locations, but nothing really to add.
Any questions or comments? All in favor of the... Oh, Steven, sorry.
Thought you saw my finger. Okay, so I don't know if this has the same profile of other chicken restaurants in terms of traffic. It was difficult for me, reading through it, to imagine or really visualize how the traffic flow would go. Is this the point that that will be decided or begin discussion? Or is that at one of the later steps in the process?
In terms of what's on the site plan and where the curbs and the directional arrows are and the orientation of the parking and circulation, it's at this point at site plan review. Where it may get into more of an administrative type of review is that if there are more cars based on demand than what are shown on the plan, even the auxiliary stacking plan, and it exceeds that auxiliary stacking, then from an administrative standpoint, we would work with the applicants and most likely the police department to figure out a safe and effective way of moving traffic within the site and from other sites, just to make sure that there's traffic flow there.
Is there a diagram that best shows that at this time, or that's coming in the future?
There's a diagram in the site plan packet and the materials, and it was also in the planning commission packet that was... It's in their online packet as well, so that can be accessed by the public. And they have a diagram that shows not just the onsite circulation, but farther to the north and to the west, they have auxiliary stacking spaces where additional cars can line up off the site, but all but within the same shopping center. So, a lot of those cars that are... That may exceed what can be accommodated on the site. What we strive to do is to have that excess stacking go on to north of Walgreens site and south of IHOPs, so that there's a lot of unused pavement, a lot of unused parking and circulation area that could be used as stacking. Now, if that's the case, Raising Cane's operations plan would have their employees go out and monitor onsite traffic. And so they would help with the traffic flow of getting cars from offsite onto the site so that it still flowed through the drive-through and in the parking lot.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can see the space there in what you're showing, Emery, but how functionally that would work, I'm interested in learning about that going forward. You know, how would... At what point would customers know to... Where to go outside of the footprint of the parking lot of the building itself? You know, what directions? How would that all start? And how would it not affect other businesses there as well? So, all that kind of stuff, I'm interested in knowing going forward. The last thing is, I read that coming out of the Ford Road entrance, there will be no left turn, I believe it was stated. So, that's good. But I also would like to know a little bit about how we see those cars that want to go east, how they get themselves going east if they're starting off going west down Ford Road in the future. Because if there's a lot of these cars coming out of the site, they got to turn around somewhere. And I don't know if it's go up to Warren Road or Hanford Road or Myers Parking Lot, you know, to make that change as well.
Yeah, that's a good question. And one of the things that we looked at when at the planning commission level and the staff review level was where all the exiting cars and cars entering will go. So that in the southwest corner, that drive will be inbound only, so that'll be one-way. So, traffic can enter through Ford Road and then turn right going east into the site, and that'll be one-way there. And there will also be a driveway on the north side of the site from that access drive on the far north side, just south of Crave Barbecue. So, there will be two ways into the site, but there will only be one way out of the site, which is that northern drive. So, if there's... If there are cars stacked up that are exiting, they won't be stacked up near Ford Road. They'll be stacked up more towards the north side of the site. So, if they... If Raising Cane's needed some kind of a traffic control, they could have their staff do that and monitor that with the cross-traffic with that access drive. Once the outbound cars are on that access drive to the north, I think there are 12 different curb cuts within that shopping center with a mix of Sheldon Road access, Ford Road access, and Morton Taylor Road access to the far east. So, there's multiple options for customers to exit the site depending on what might be most efficient at that time. So, maybe on a busy Saturday, if they're going eastbound, they may just want to take the access drive all the way to Morton Taylor so they can take a right to get to the light.
Okay, thank you.
In the future, you'll also have the Boulevard here, so...
Does it end there? I think it ends there, or it goes a little further?
West to Sheldon.
Yeah, past Sheldon.
It is a little west of Sheldon.
So, they'll be able to turn and then flip around there and go east.
Thanks.
I know.
So, you talked about the exit on the north side, you know, like near the Craves Barbecue. So, is there a traffic concern there? Because that road is used quite a bit, I think, coming in and out. Do we need to do any... I'm just concerned about the safety issues because that particular... I wouldn't call it the street, but that particular pathway is used through Lowe's, to Target, to all these places, and that's quite heavily used.
It is, and it... On the north side of the site, it currently doesn't have a defined curb. So, it takes a little... Drivers get the direction from either the painted line or the wheel marks in terms of where to turn within that drive. So, Raising Cane's, they'll have a defined curb on that north side. And also, they'll have a stop control... Stop sign there as well, and a more defined crosswalk. So, one of the things that the site doesn't have is a defined sidewalk that goes from Ford Road all the way north to Crave. Somebody can get there, but it's not a very pleasant walk. What's proposed on the Raising Cane's plan is a defined sidewalk that can take someone from Ford Road all the way up to the crosswalk just south of Crave Barbecue and staying on sidewalk the entire time. Doing that, it allows for a crosswalk there as well. So, there's going to be those visual cues for drivers and pedestrians for the crossing.
I think that will help because, you know, people just curve around that area. So, that's a concern.
We've also been meeting with M.D.A.T. on the Ford Road Boulevard, and one of the thing that is being shored up is that Ford and Sheldon crossing. Because remember, we have that senior housing site, yes, on the south part of Ford Road. So, they've beefed up that crossing because you have a lot of the seniors that'll cross there. And with that Boulevard there, they're going to have to kind of cross through that. And then if they want to start going to the chicken place, I think, and you have a lot of cars stacked up, I think we should take a look at that also, make sure that that's safe if they want to walk over to the chicken shop from the senior facility.
Right, and if they do, they're... And they get to the sidewalk on Ford Road and they... If they go on to the Walgreens site, there will be a sidewalk that goes across that drive as a crosswalk. Or if they stay on Ford Road and go across the driveway, they can get to the Raising Cane's site through a sidewalk there. So, there will be sidewalk options from both ends.
Sorry. I always forget to press my button here. So, I wanted to make a note that there was a traffic study done, and it did use data from this year, so I was very pleased to see that compared to some of the other ones we've seen. I was wondering, there were some recommendations, and this kind of gets at what we've all been discussing here as far as the ways in and ways out and traffic. But there were recommendations in the traffic study. Are those going to be implemented?
Some of them, they aren't able to because the Boulevard project will eventually take care of a lot of the current issues that are ongoing, especially on Ford Road. Some of the concerns are more offsite concerns that are outside of Raising Cane's control and outside of their project area. And one of those areas is in the drive that is directly across from Coles. That drive gets a lot of traffic, and there are some backups there in terms of... In terms of delays, especially if someone's turning left to go on to Sheldon, or if someone's going straight across and they have to go across several lanes of traffic. So, there's not really a condition there that can be corrected by the applicant at this time. One of the findings that we did explore during the evaluation of the site plan is that because there are multiple ways to get onto Sheldon Road and the surrounding roads, if somebody was leaving the Raising Cane's site and they wanted to get across Sheldon, if they didn't want to cross there because of traffic backups or for whatever reason, they could find another driveway, even if they left the Raising Cane's site. And then they made a left, an immediate left, to go southbound back to Ford Road to take a right. They could do that as well. As long as they're on that common drive, they can get back to Ford Road, as long as they don't get there directly from the Raising Cane's site. So, there's no remedy for that crossing at this point, just because it's offsite. But because of the multiple points of access, there's more options for drivers to go.
Okay. It does say provide a single inbound lane and single outbound lane at the internal access driveways proposed for Raising Cane's.
There's an inbound lane from the access drive to the north where Raising Cane's can be accessed on the north side. And then its outbound is also on the north side, too. That may have been what that one was referring to.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then also with the inbound and outbound, there may be... There may have been a recommendation where that cross-drive between Coles and the shopping center may be widening that to allow a dedicated right-turn lane and a left-turn lane. Even though it may be wide enough now, that may be something in the future that both property owners may have to do. But it's because it wasn't within Raising Cane's site, it's not an improvement they can affect. Not like an improvement like in a road right-of-way where if they're adding a passing flare, adding a turn lane, where something in a right-of-way, they can work with the road agency. This was something, because those lanes take place on private property, it's not something that we're able to enforce.
Right, I see that for... You know, like, prior to the Ford Road improvements, maintaining drive... Existing driveway striping and geometry with the two... With, well, I guess it's the same shopping center, Harvard Square Shopping Center and Walgreens access. But then, they do make a recommendation about that single inbound lane and single outbound lane, and then also install minor leg stop control for outbound traffic at the internal site access driveways. And then, of course, wayfinding to direct the motors, which makes sense.
Yeah, they'll have the wayfinding signage, and they'll have the stop signage there. They won't be having... They won't have any lights internally with traffic control.
What is the minor leg stop control? What is that?
What was that called?
It's in the recommendations from Kimley Horn. It's on page 216 of my packet. Minor leg stop control. Steven? It was 216. It does look like it's something to do with it. An intersection. Maybe putting stop signs in.
One second to find here.
It's also, it's referred to on page 195 and also to 114. But it seems like they're specifying signalized intersections and minor leg stop controlled intersections.
Okay, so the Ford Road and, so they, they recommend prior to Ford Road's improvements to maintain the existing striping of Harvard Square. One of the things that are, that will be changed is, what's recommended is on the outbound to allow outbound right turn only from that common access drive. Third one was provide a single inbound lane and single outbound lane at the internal site access drive. So there will be one-way circulation flow there. The minor leg stop control for the outbound traffic. I think that had to do with the internal stop signage.
Okay.
Inside the site.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
But it wasn't clear.
Yeah, so that one is where the traffic is exiting northbound and they're going onto the common access drive to have a stop sign there so that they're, they don't just go right out east or west, that they stop first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3. Consider special land use in site plan for fast food, drive-through restaurant, multi-tenant, commercial shopping center, DeBajah Properties.
Madam Supervisor, resolution of Board of Trustees Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, approval of the special land use and site plan for DeBajah Properties. Whereas the project sponsor has requested special land approval and site plan approval for a multi-tenant commercial shopping center use with an attached fast food, drive-through restaurant on parcel listed in our packet at the northeast corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck Road. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the special land use application and applicable criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as a request meets the criteria of the special land use approval in section 27.03C of the zoning ordinance. And whereas a planning commission reviewed the site plan application and applicable criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as request meets the requirement of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve special land use and site plan in planning application numbers 131-SLU-7877 and number 131-SPC-7878 respectively for a multi-tenant commercial shopping center with an attached, attached fast food, drive-through restaurant use on the parcel listed in our packet located at the northeast corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck as the request meets the special land use criteria and development standards of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Court.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The project sponsor proposes to construct two multi-tenant commercial buildings at the northeast corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck Road. The north building will be 7,122 square feet, the south building will be 6,833 square feet and includes a proposed drive-through restaurant at the south end. The site is currently vacant and it abuts existing driveway stubs within the Crossroads Village Shopping Center to the north and east. The Crossroads Village Shopping Center includes Target, Coles, and several other retailers. So this is right in the outlet. It's not across the street where some people thought. We had a lot of calls on this one. It's right on the outlet of the shopping center. Multi-tenant commercial shopping centers are principally permitted uses in the C3 district and fast food, drive-through restaurants are special land uses in the C3 district. The applicant has concurrently applied for special land use review and site plan review. At its meeting on November 6, 2023, the planning commission recommended approval of the special land use and site plan with conditions. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Supervisor. I do not have anything to add, but the community planner, Patrick Solon, is here to answer any questions.
Trustee Foster, do you have anything?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Stephen, no. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5. Sorry, G4. Consider site plan for multi-tenant commercial shopping center on Warren and Canton Center Plaza.
Another long one. Resolution of the Board of Trustees Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, approval of the site plan for Warren and Canton Center Plaza. Whereas the project sponsor has requested site plan approval for a multi-tenant commercial shopping center use on the parcel listed in our packet at 7219 North Canton Center Road. And whereas a planning commission reviewed the request and applicable by criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as request meets the requirement of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the site plan in planning application number 016-SPC-7951 for a multi-tenant commercial shopping center use on parcel listed in our packet at 7219 North Canton Center Road, located at the northeast corner of Canton Center and Warren Road, as the request meets the requirement of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The project sponsor proposes to construct a 7,415 square foot multi-tenant commercial building at 7219 North Canton Center Road, which is located at the northwest corner of North Canton Center and Warren Road. There is a vacant building on the site already, which was formerly PNC Bank. This will be demolished as part of the redevelopment project. The two existing driveways, one on each road, will be retained. Multi-tenant commercial shopping centers are principal permitted uses in the C1 zoning district. At its meeting on November 6, 2023, the planning commission recommends approval of the site plan with conditions. Director Norwood, anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything further to add, but community planner, Patrick Solon, is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Foster, anything from the meeting?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Patrick? Comments?
My only comment is Clerk Seagrist owes Treasurer Slavens a cup of coffee for reading all his motions and resolutions tonight. Good job, Diane.
More than that.
I have a, I have a quick question. Do we, do we know, like, is, is it a single-story building or is it double, like?
It'll be a single-story building.
Like, you know, it says 7,000 square feet. So I was just curious about how big it is and.
Yeah, so 7,000, 7,415, that'll be the, the building footprint. So the building will be about 90 feet wide by about 83 feet approximately.
Okay.
So be almost square.
So is it, do we know the purpose is just going to be a multi-use thing?
Correct. I think there's a conceptual design for a restaurant with outdoor seating.
Okay.
But a shopping center, it can have restaurants, it can have retail, it can have personal service establishments, a mix of that, as well as other permitted uses in the commercial district.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5. Consider approval of agreement with OHM Advisors and Fourth Economy for the Michigan Avenue Innovation Network.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment stated in Budget Implications and Account Number section of the RBA. I further move to approve the agreement between Fourth Economy Consultants and the Charter Township of Canton for $49,580 and to authorize the township supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Canton Township received a grant from the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, SEMCOG, in the amount of $45,000 intended for discovery, data collection, and reporting. The application was made on behalf of each of the communities located along the Michigan Avenue corridor and includes Canton, Van Buren Township, Wayne, Westland, Inkster, Dearborn, and Dearborn Heights. A request for proposals was submitted and responded to by OHM Advisors, who recruited Fourth Economy Consulting to assist as subject matter experts. Members of Canton's leadership team have worked closely with OHM Advisors and Fourth Economy Consultants to refine a proposal that will provide demographics, market trends, and workforce dynamics along the corridor. Furthermore, the process will include a robust community engagement campaign in each of the participating communities, resulting in recommendations on the feasibility of creating an ecosystem that fosters innovation, collaboration, growth, and sustainable development across the main corridor and its surrounding communities. The proposal was submitted by Fourth Economy Consultants with OHM Advisors serving as its subconsultant. The proposed cost includes fees totaling $49,580, of which a significant portion will be covered by the SEMCOG grant of $45,000. As part of the grant agreement, SEMCOG will reimburse 81.85% of the $45,000, which equals $36,832.50. The remaining balance of $13,017.50 will be dispersed and invoiced among the remaining participating communities. A budget amendment is necessary. Director LaFever, do you want to add anything?
Nothing to add. I know this is a, a project near and dear to the supervisor's office, so happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions? Stephen?
Thank you. Director LaFever and Supervisor Graham Hudek, it's been a while since we've seen a presentation on the main and the concept. And I was just wondering, I, every time we approve some new business on, on Michigan Avenue to be built, I wonder, like, was that supposed to be a spot that the main could have taken or do we have a designated area and are we working to kind of protect that for this project?
Yeah, we certainly have lots that the township has purchased or inherited along the way. You know, that will certainly be factored into this. That's really the importance of this study and, and, you know, the timing of it comes with funding opportunity. So through leadership, we were able to get the SEMCOG grant, which helps us get to this point, which will help us develop that plan so that we know moving forward where we need to focus on and focus our efforts on. You know, that'll be an inventory of properties along the corridor. That'll be services that are currently provided. It'll identify services we should be going after. So it's really going to give us a roadmap to, to start prioritizing those needs, not just for Canton, of course, but the other communities as well. But to your point, you know, it's absolutely a step we need to, to, to go through in order to identify kind of our plan moving forward. But I, I think a lot of us kind of share your same, same thoughts and those questions come up every time we get something along Michigan Avenue.
Okay. I mean, I know there's still some empty gaps in there or businesses that are no longer in existence, but the buildings are still there and I figure that's places for it. But sometimes we're, we've approved, we approved a business or two tonight, you know, and more recently, some car washes and things like that. So, okay.
Summer?
I was just going to mention that a similar question came up at the planning commission meeting, I think it was last week, Patrick, when we were talking about the main and, you know, we've approved projects. But really the thought was since we're working on our master plan, we can make sure the zoning matches the vision and the master plan matches the vision for that corridor.
Right, exactly. And where the fire station is going, we have a lot of acres there around the landfill. So we're reserving that. And also, we've been working with a lot of the developers along the areas, like Singh Brothers across the street. You know, they own a lot of empty buildings and they're very interested. And they said they could help move some companies in to help with their research. So we are definitely leaving spots. Yeah, thanks for asking. Any other questions? Kate?
Yeah, this is me just being kind of a stickler for details. And it might be a question more for Wendy, but the SEMCOG grant is not a federal grant, right?
My knowledge, it is not a federal grant.
Okay, because I'm looking at the budget implications and it says increased revenues in federal grants.
I, to be fair, I was on vacation last week, so I did not review those. Somebody else in finance did, so.
Yeah, I think it might be. What happens is SEMCOG gets a lot of federal grants and then they disperse them. They're like a re-granter. So I believe this one came from the federal.
Okay, that makes sense.
And Director Norwood just said he thinks that it, it did come from the federal government for planning purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6. Consider approval to purchase 2024 Seasons fertilizer, fungicide, plant protectant, and nutrients for Pheasant Run Golf Club and Parks in 2023.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of 2024's season fertilizer, fungicides, plant protection, protectants, and nutrients for Pheasant Run Golf Course and Park Division in 2023 for a total amount of $134,000 to be paid from the 2024 budget as detailed in the Budget Implications and Account Number section of the RBA.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Due to the anticipated increase in cost and lack of availability, the Leisure Services Department is recommending taking advantage of the early order program rebate that is being offered for fertilizer, fungicide, plant protectant, and nutrients to Pheasant Run Golf Club and Parks. This program allows Canton to purchase and receive materials in 2023 but not pay until 2024, allowing Canton to save approximately 10 to 20% depending on the product and guaranteed to receive the product. These purchases against the township will be for multiple products made to multiple vendors, with the quantity of products being unknown because they are weather-dependent. Therefore, Canton Leisure Services is recommending to waive the bidding process and approve the following purchases to be made in 2023 for 2024 Seasons, fertilizers, fungicides, plant protectants, and nutrients for the Pheasant Run Golf Club and Parks Division in a total amount of $134,000 to ensure better rate and guaranteed delivery. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Yes, thank you. This has been a successful program. This will be the third season that we've done this. And especially with some of the shipping issues and lack of availability of product, this has been really instrumental in helping us to acquire product and it has helped us reduce our budget as well by saving, by doing the pre-purchase.
Thanks. Any questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah, I, I think it's great that you're making sure that we can get the best price on this and thinking forward on that. Just wondering, when we use products like this, do we put any notices to the public up?
We don't because it's not really publicly accessible. We don't, because it's not really publicly accessible during the times that we're putting the product down, and it's really the, most of our products are also like a liquid base, very few of them. We do a handful of granular, but it's really the dust from the granular that is a concern, but we do have certified applicators and, well, I guess I should say, I'm thinking specifically of Pheasant Run, but for the parks, you are correct. There we do, yes, we do.
Okay.
Put notifications out, and we sign those areas during those times. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider approval for the purchase of golf CIP equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek Golf Club to order CIP equipment in 2023 to be purchased as stated in the Budget Implications and Account Number section of the RBA.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek Golf Clubs use many pieces of turf maintenance equipment to maintain their premier 27-hole golf courses. Various pieces of equipment are well beyond their useful life in years and hours of service and are being recommended to be replaced. Pheasant Run is requesting to purchase a total of $354,937.31 in equipment in 2024 and 2025, and Fellows Creek is requesting to purchase $376,377.78 in equipment for '24 and '25. Breakdown is provided in the background. Due to lead time, Leisure Services is recommending ordering equipment in 2023 for delivery and purchase in '24 and '25. By ordering early, this will allow the equipment to be ready for purchase and delivery in the allotted time while still following the CIP purchasing timeline. Equipment purchase will be contingent on Spartan Distributors' approval of early ordering. Fellows Creek contractor Indigo Golf Partners receives state bid pricing, which means these mowers cannot be bought at a lower price than any distributor in the state of Michigan. Therefore, we are requesting to waive the bidding process for the purchase of the golf equipment. Director Homberger, you want to add anything?
Just one slight thing that isn't stated quite correct in the motion. By purchasing with Fellows Creek and Indigo Golf, there, we're able to purchase on Indigo's national contract price, which is actually a savings over the state bid price. So when we initially looked at bringing a Pheasant Run purchase order prior to working with Indigo on this, we were going to purchase on the state bid price, and we had, by partnering with Indigo, we were actually able to reduce the Pheasant Run cost by over $20,000 by using the Indigo national pricing. So that's helped us with our, meeting our budgets.
But that wasn't, the motion seems to be right. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just the summary.
Okay, just the summary, okay. All right. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G8. Consider towing contract to J&amp;T Crowa Nationwide Recovery and Mayflower Towing for the southern part of Canton Township.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the agreement from J&amp;T Crowa Nationwide Recovery and Mayflower Towing for a contract beginning January 1, 2024 and end December 31, 2025, with a one-two-year renewal option at the discretion of the township supervisor and authorize the township supervisor to sign the agreement, subject to final approval by legal counsel.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The Board of Trustees would like to enter into a two-year pilot agreement with J&amp;T Crowa Nationwide Recovery and Mayflower Towing to provide towing services in the southern part of Canton Township. Under the agreement, J&amp;T will be the preferred vendor for tow south of Palmer Road and to the west of Canton Center, where Palmer Road ends south of Geddes Road to the western border of the township. If for any reason, J&amp;T cannot or does not respond to a call for service, then Westland Car Care may be called for service. J&amp;T will also provide toes along I-275 in Canton Township where hazmat gear is needed. Deputy Supervisor Howard, do you want to comment on this?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye. Oh, sorry, Kate.
Do we have any budget numbers for this?
Could you be more specific?
Well, yeah, what rates?
Yeah, the contract was attached, the rates are in the contract, and the rates are consistent with the bids that were made in 2022.
Okay. Did have another question, I'm trying to remember what it was. So for this, this is going to be different for the police department to implement their, they're going to have to, you know, know what area of the township and, you know, that they have to call for, I'm sorry, I'm not saying this very clearly, but I think you understand what I'm saying, but they're going to have to, instead of just calling the, our current contractor, they have two that they'll have to call depending on where the tow is.
Yes, that's correct, and I believe Chief Ball has already talked to his dispatchers about that in anticipation of the board adopting this agreement, and so there's been some preparation in that regard.
Okay, that's good. And then my other question is, because this is a pilot, how will it be evaluated?
A lot of it, I think, will be based on the data and opinion of the police department that we get back from this. So, you know, Chief Ball, I think, will, you know, be looking at, you know, performance and measuring some indicators, and then, you know, based on, you know, the data that's gathered over the two-year period, we'll evaluate the vendor.
Okay, so will the board be given information on that evaluation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a quick question. So do we have any, you know, is there any, in the past, we had only one contractor, like, is there, we don't have any issues with having more than one vendor for this, right? Like...
You mean legal issues?
Yeah, I mean, like, do we, can we have more than?
Yes.
One, that's, sorry, I couldn't phrase it correctly.
No, no, that's fine. Yep, yeah, both agreements have what's called a non-exclusivity clause in them.
The others? Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G9, consider approval of tentative collective bargaining agreement with International Union of American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, ASME Local 3860.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Charter Township of Canton and ASME Local number 3860, with the term ending December 31, 2026, and authorize the township supervisor to sign on behalf of the Canton Township.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. The current collective bargaining agreement with ASME Local 3860 expires on December 31, 2023. The parties have come to a tentative agreement on terms for a new three-year agreement expiring on December 31, 2026. Background lists the details, and you have it in your packet, so the ASME bargaining unit has voted to ratify the new agreement with the township. As soon as the board approves it, we will do a signing. Director Supervisor, Director, Deputy Supervisor Howard, do you have anything to add?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement.
Summer?
No question, but just want to say this looks like a great agreement, and congratulations to everyone that worked to make it happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kate?
Yeah, I agree with Trustee Foster's comments, and just wanted to say thank you to everyone who worked on it on both sides.
Anyone else? And thanks to the board for, you know, their leadership in trying to improve, prove the wages of our employees. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to the team. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we move on to a public comment, so public comment is three minutes each, so please come up, let me look online first, let me see what we have online. So we have five attendees. If you would like to public comment, you can raise your hand electronically, and I'll call on you. Any public comment? No public comment? I don't see any public comment. Okay, no public comment online. Any public comment in the room, and we'll allow you three minutes, please state your name and come up to the podium. Okay?
Hello, everyone. Leander Richmond, again. I was here a few months ago complaining about retaliation carried out by one of your inspectors over a sidewalk issue, because I dared to question two of the slabs that she had marked in front of my mother-in-law's house. Again, I'll tell you, in my conversation with her on the phone, it took her a month to get back to me, that's fine, she let it slip that she'd been doing this a long time, and they just kind of eyeballed it. So I challenged her on that statement. I probably shouldn't have, because the result was she showed up at my mother-in-law's house to check those two slabs, and she marked damn near the whole sidewalk. Stated that she didn't have time to go around and recheck her work, but she took the time to measure everything on the sidewalk. I came in, I complained. The next day, I was met at my mother-in-law's house by a gentleman who's not in this room and your municipal services director. The first gentleman that showed up had an attitude, extremely poor public service. He told me what he didn't appreciate about me. This gentleman showed up with a much different tone, and I thank him for that. But three different times now, I've requested meetings with you guys to discuss the retaliatory nature that was carried out, who's going to pay for all of those additional slabs, because it's my request that you guys pay for them. We only have to pay for them by law that was put in after Canton lost a lawsuit in 2008 anyway. Okay? I don't know how much time I have left, but that's pretty much what I want to say. I still want a meeting. I'm not going to let this go. If I have to, I'll drag it into court. But it was retaliation. I challenge anyone to define it as anything other than that. And then I'd like to know what you're going to do about it. What you're going to do about an inspector that retaliates against people that questions her work? And then who's going to pay for the sidewalk? And I know I'm not going to get an answer, because this is public comment only, you're not required to. So thank you for your time. I'm still waiting for you guys to reach out to me. You were here, Mrs. Hodeck, when I requested a meeting with yourself and Mr. Harvier, I don't want to mess up your name. Okay, Harvard, sorry. I'm still waiting for that call and that meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comment? Public comment? Any public comment in the room? No public comment? Okay. All right, public comment is over. Any staff comments? Diane, please tell us what's going on. We have a lot happening.
Lots of events going on. Tomorrow night kicks off our winter wonderland in the park here, so residents will see holiday lights in Heritage Park from here on through the new year, so we encourage folks to come out and check those out. This weekend, we also have Christmas in the Village, taking place out at the Village Arts Factory from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., so free activity, horse-drawn carriage rides, all kinds of good stuff, visits with Santa, so we encourage residents to visit and check that out, and then many more holiday programs coming up. So lots going on, lots to do, so it's definitely the holiday season around here.
All right, thank you. Greg?
Just to let the board know and citizens know that water is going in the pool today. They should be completely full by the time we're out of this meeting, and we will take, we have to take some time to get the water heated up and chemicals balanced, and our lifeguard's retrained, but we are on track for our mid-December opening. I don't want to give a date just yet, even though we have one in our head. We don't want to underpromise, we want to over-deliver here, and we will be doing our grand reopening January 5 at 5:30 p.m. ribbon cutting and 6:00 p.m. for an event, so look forward to those things, but the pool will be open before that grand reopening.
Thank you.
And you're asking the board to do the inaugural dive into the pool? Is that what you're here to say?
Yeah.
Actually, if you could, we could sneak on over there and do a polar plunge right now, it's 55 degrees, but yes, you are welcome to do the inaugural dive. Actually, no diving, so inaugural jump.
Shoot, never mind then.
Anyone else? No. Kate, do you have anything?
Just hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Stephen.
For those in our community that celebrated, I want to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, because that's coming up in the next week before our next board meeting, so I hope they enjoy their festival of lights.
Thank you, Treasurer Slavens.
Well, just a quick reminder, we'll be mailing out the winter property taxes at December 1, so look for those in the mail. We've already had residents calling, asking why they haven't gotten their property taxes, but by law, we cannot collect until December 1, so we don't mail out till December 1. And everybody enjoy the month of December, there's a lot of fun things happening.
Thank you. Summer?
Stay warm, it's getting cold outside.
Tanya?
We have so many different holidays coming up in the next month, so wishing everyone Hanukkah, Christmas, Kwanzaa, whatever they celebrate during this time of the year.
Thank you. In terms of, I just want to make a comment about a meeting that was asked for. Our admin was, has been out sick. Unfortunately, COVID and bronchial infections have raised her ugly head with some employees, so we will schedule that meeting, that's on the to-do list, but she was out sick, so that is why that has not been scheduled. Okay, well, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.